Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson. Being in a regular meeting of the High Point City Council, we want to welcome you all here and thank you for your time being with us. Here at the DIAS, we've got every member of City Council present. We also have Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, and Madam Manager with us, as well as the host of our senior executive staff. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to join us for a moment of silence and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the Constitution with the president and justice so strong.
Prior to beginning this evening's meeting, I'll ask at this time if there are any changes that need to be made to our agenda before we adopt.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to remove General Business Agenda Item G-5 2025-294, Public Hearing for Tax Amendment 24-02 from consideration on the proposed agenda. And I'd like to add an item to extend the date of the Economic Development Policy for an additional year effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Councilmember Peters. So to, if I have that correct, item G-5 2025-294, you asked for that to be removed from consideration. That's that we add a general business item to discuss the targeted incentives policy. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Any questions about those recommended changes to the agenda? Okay. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt. So moved.
Second.
She made a motion to make those changes.
Oh, hers was already a motion, apologies. Who has a second? Mayor Portem Moore has a second on that item. Any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? To adopt our agenda as amended? Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and our agenda is adopted with those amendments. For this evening's meeting, we have a number of recognitions that I'm proud that we get to make this evening. We're a city that is so strong because we've got incredible people that make this city strong. In various capacities, we all work together to do that. And for this first group, I'm going to invite up a number of people who are here with us tonight. And so, if you hear your name, I'll just ask you to join me up front. We're going to read our proclamation, take a really nice picture, and celebrate. Matthew Stafford. The City of High Point's Aspire Team, last name Lyons. Did I say it correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, perfect. Come on and join us. And then, for folks who helped us become the first certified autism destination on the East Coast, led by Visit High Point. I've got a number of folks I'm going to invite up here. The team from A Special Blend, Katie Van Dyke and others. Could also invite up the team from Gianna's, Mr. Dave Nicoletta, if he's here. We're going to invite up, on our very first day on the job, Katina Bergerman, who is the new CEO at High Point Arts Council. Why don't you come on up, Katina? From the High Point Museum, Ms. Tamara Vaughn. And Ms. Vaughn, did I say it right? Is it Tamara or Tamara? I did say it right the first time, perfect. Come on up. From High Point Library, is it Sarah Nairu or Nairo? Nairu. I'm getting it right the first time. And then, of course, the Visit High Point team, Melody Burnett and Nancy Bowman. Is there anyone else that I missed? Anyone from, oh, the ARCs here. How could I forget the ARC? Come on up, Stephanie. Stephanie Onkoviak. And you've got more folks with you as well? Is that? Ah, from the Aspire Team. Why don't y'all come on up and join us? You're in the best spot for the picture, Matthew. No, no, you're in a great spot. Is there anyone else who should be invited up? Is anyone from extra special people here? Okay. And one more time, Dave Nicoletta and anyone from A Special Blend? Okay, all right. So I'm gonna, before I read, I'm actually going to hand you all these, if that's okay? So, from the Aspire Team, and we did enough for everyone or for the organizations listed, one per organization. So, for the Aspire Team, Matthew, for you, sir?
Thank you.
For the ARC? Visit High Point? Arts Council? Museum? And Library, right on time. Okay, all right. So this is a proclamation for Americans with Disabilities Day. Whereas on June 26, 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law, representing a historic step forward in the pursuit of civil rights, equality, and inclusion for more than 60 million Americans living with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has transformed the landscape of American life, breaking down barriers in employment, education, transportation, public accommodations, communications, and access to government services, so that individuals with disabilities may live, work, and thrive as full and equal members of society. And whereas this landmark legislation reflects the enduring values of dignity, opportunity, and justice, it reaffirms our national commitment to upholding the rights of all individuals regardless of physical, sensory, cognitive, or mental health challenges. And whereas over the past 35 years, the ADA has empowered millions to pursue higher education, build meaningful careers, participate fully in civic life, and enrich their communities with their talents and perspectives. And whereas we recognize the tireless efforts of disability advocates, organizations, public servants, and community members who continue to champion the spirit of the ADA and push for greater access, greater awareness, and greater accountability in all aspects of public life. And whereas the City of High Point extends its sincere appreciation to the many organizations whose ongoing advocacy, promotion of independent living, and commitment to fulfilling the promise of hope, inclusion, and freedom envisioned by the ADA have had a lasting impact on our community. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2025, as Americans with Disabilities Act 35th Anniversary Day, and encourage all residents to honor this milestone by promoting accessibility, celebrating diversity, and advancing equity for people with disabilities in every community. Can we please celebrate these incredible folks this evening? And what we'll do is, I think we're going to do two rows, right? So we'll do two rows. So can I get a group to join us up here? If you're used to getting in the front row on pictures, let's just do that. I don't want to have to, I don't want to have to make that awkward, you know? And how do you feel about holding that up for everybody? There you go. So you want to step, oh, there you go. Someone step right in the middle there? And is this one yours? Yeah, perfect. And we'll make sure for those who weren't with us this evening that we'll send copies to them of the proclamation. Thank you all so much. Okay. Okay. Is Dr. Latanya Bowman here? Oh, is this supposed to be next? I'm sorry. You gotta save the best for last. Yes, absolutely. Would you all join us up here as well? I think she wants to record, not join, but we're gonna... Yeah, why don't y'all come on and join? How are we doing today? It's a pleasure to meet you, Dr. Bowman. Yes, sir. It's a pleasure to meet you. How are we doing today? It's good to see you again. Yep. How are you? It's good to see Ms. Fuller. How are you doing today? Ms. Ruby. It's a pleasure to meet you. Ah, Ms. Camp, okay. Ms. Fuller. A pleasure to meet you. Yes, sir. Matthew, a pleasure to meet you. Yeah, okay, all right. So we've got a number of these. And can I ask you, Dr. Bowman? Can I actually give this back to you, then you can take one and pass it down to the family? You can all take one. Yeah, there you go. There you go. We printed on the good paper, so you will take it. All right. Whereas the City of High Point, North Carolina is committed to honoring the diverse histories and contributions of all communities within and surrounding our region, including the historically significant township of Jamestown. And whereas during the antebellum era of the 1840s, 1850s, several free people of color, families who owned land or were active members of the Jamestown and Greater High Point communities, chose to leave the South in response to growing threats to the liberty and journeying northward in pursuit of freedom and self-determination. And whereas these families, including the pedophets, weavers, Evans, hedge pass, Richardson's, Roberts, Jeffries, Carter's, shoe crafts, and others, joined an alliance with the Quaker community, participated in strategic acts of resistance against slavery, helping to establish free farming settlements in Indiana and contributing directly to the efforts of the Underground Railroad. And whereas many of these individuals answered the call of the National Immigration Convention of Colored People in Cleveland, Ohio, August 1854, which encouraged the formation of safe, self-sustaining communities in the Northwest Territories as an means of preserving freedom and human dignity. And whereas the contributions of these pioneering families extended to national service, some having served in the Revolutionary War and others in the Civil War, demonstrating a profound commitment to liberty, democracy, and the advancement of civil rights. And whereas the City of High Point acknowledges with deep respect the storied migration from Jamestown and High Point to Marion, Indiana, it recognizes the powerful legacy these families left behind, which now links our southern and northern communities through shared heritage and values. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of the City of High Point, North Carolina, that the City of High Point does hereby formally recognize and honor the contributions of these free people of color and celebrates the historical connection between the township of Jamestown and the City of Marion, Indiana. Be it further resolved, that the City of High Point affirms its support for building an official relationship between Jamestown, North Carolina, and Marion, Indiana, fostering dialogue, remembrance, cultural exchange, and unity between our communities as we preserve and promote this important chapter of American history. Can we please celebrate this occasion? All right. Now, do you want us to do, do what? You think you can do one? Do we need to center up a little bit? So we're going to slide down just a tad bit, y'all.
I think you might need to do two rows.
And do two rows? Okay, all right. All our front row people on the front? Thank you. Can I please invite up the illustrious Parks and Rec Department of the City of High Point? Can y'all please clap for them as they come forward? Now, is the whole team coming up? The whole Parks and Rec team? Ms. Lyons, you didn't realize you'd be coming up twice for two pictures?
I did not.
How are you doing? Good to see you, man. Good to see y'all. Hey, will y'all do me a favor and come on down a little bit? How are you doing? It's good to see you again. Good to see you again. Do you come on up? And we, we'll get some other folks to take pictures. Okay, all right. Whereas our parks and recreation facilities and programs are an essential part of communities throughout this country, including High Point. Whereas parks and recreation programs and services promote health, wellness, and community connection, and encourage our citizens to spend time outdoors, improving the physical and mental health of High Point residents. And whereas parks and recreation programs and services promote active lifestyles and encourage physical activities by providing space for proper sports, hiking trails, tennis and pickleball courts, golf courses, swimming pools, and many other activities. And whereas park and recreation programming and educational activities, such as youth athletics and after-school and summer camp programs, are critical to childhood development, teaching our youth valuable leadership, teamwork, and educational skills. And whereas our parks and natural spaces are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and provide a space for children and adults to connect with nature and to recreate outdoors. And whereas parks and recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, the City of High Point has long recognized the numerous benefits derived from the resources provided through a strong Parks and Recreation Department. And therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of High Point and encourage all residents to celebrate the vital role that our Parks and Recreational Department plays in enhancing quality of life. Invite everyone to explore and enjoy our city's parks, trails, and green spaces, and to take advantage of the wide array of programs, events, and educational activities offered by the city. Can we please celebrate this incredible time? I'm going to invite our longstanding Parks and Rec expert on City Council to come on down and join us for the picture. And since you're in the middle. And here, I'm gonna tilt it down for you, so. You know, I always watch that show Parks and Rec on TV and just imagine, Lee, that y'all had the most funnest of times. Thank y'all so much for celebrating this occasion with us, and thank you to everyone who came out for the resolutions and proclamations. At this time, we'll look at our consent agenda items and ask if there is a motion, forgive me, I apologize. At this time, we'll actually open the public comment period. And we don't have anyone signed up to speak, but it is public comment period. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward, please feel free to do so. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and thank you all for your civil participation. Next, we'll review our consent agenda items. And if there's no concerns, we'll entertain a motion to adopt. So moved. Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to approve our consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any concerns, but I just wanted to highlight Item C-18, which was the Contract with Mental Health Association, Associates. And I just want to talk about the great work that that money has done in our city through our library and cutting down the number of times that the police have had to be called, providing very critical care to members of the community who utilize the library and other people who come there specifically for that service. And I'm just really proud. I know that Mary Sizemore, our director, is here, and she is very proud of that program. And as the liaison to the Library Board, I just want to say I'm very glad to see this continuing.
Councilmember Cook, thank you for that. And Director Sizemore gave a great presentation during last week's finance meeting, and it was great to know the amount of folks who got support with getting transportation to job interviews and to healthcare. It's so much that happens in spaces like that. Our public library is a great gathering place. So the fact that we can offer that kind of service to the benefit of the residents of this city, I think is so special. Thank you to the library team, and thank you for that, Councilmember Cook. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next, we'll move to our general agenda. First item is Item 2025-292. At this time, we'll ask if there's any recusals for this item.
Mr. Mayor, I have recused. I'm on the board of Resilience High Point.
Okay, so we'll note that Councilmember Harmon is offering his recusal. I will also offer a recusal, not as a board member, but out of abundance of caution. My wife works for the organization, and to be clear, none of the funding is used to her benefit or to her income or any of that. But out of abundance of caution, as typical, I just avoid votes like this. So I'm going to also offer my recusal. Mayor Portem, I'll pass it to you to call the vote on recusals.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion that we recuse Mayor Jefferson and Councilmember Harmon from voting on Agenda Item 2025-292. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I will make a motion to approve Agenda Item 2025-292.
Second.
There's a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. The next item is 2025-304. And I'm going to make a motion to recuse Mayor Jefferson and Councilmember Harmon from voting on Agenda Item 2025-304.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of $77,492 of ARPA-enabled funds to the High Point Schools Partner of ARPA-enabled funds to the High Point Schools partnership, an initiative program affiliate of Resilience High Point. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. More. Item 2025-305, consideration of funding to University of North Carolina at Greensboro Center for Housing and Community Studies. Council has requested to approve the allocation of $77,492 of ARPA-enabled funds to the UNCG Center for Housing and Community Studies. Approve a budget ordinance amendment transferring the funds for allocation and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute unnecessary documents. I see Stephen Hareluke here at the podium. Are you here to offer any comment on this piece?
Just available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Are there any recusals that need to be made on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognized, the Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion on the motion?
I think that it might be good for public record to know a little bit about what this program does since it is public funding. And I know that Councilwoman Cook is pretty involved and can shed some light on this for the public, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I did make several comments about this funding request back in our June budget approval meeting. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the council for considering this and putting these ARPA dollars to work to help advocate and provide mediation between landlords and tenants, and to help prevent the evictions that are currently rolling through High Point at a very high speed, as we, as I noted, and as the report that came out of UNCG recently noted. And I think that these types of programs are really positive and have a positive impact for both the landlord and the tenant to allow them to find a solution that will keep people housed and not put families and individuals out on the street. I'm very glad that we participated. I will note that I believe Guilford County and Greensboro gave approximately $400,000 apiece towards this program. And our ability to participate will ensure that the service will continue here in High Point for our residents. And I think that this is a really great use of the final ARPA-enabled dollars, and so I'm really glad to see this go through. And hopefully it will pass in just a moment.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Mayor Proton, more, and Councilmember Cook. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next.
I have a point of privilege for you.
Sure, sure, Mayor.
I just, we've been dealing with ARPA dollars since the pandemic. And I just wanna tell you how relieved I am for my philosophy on that, that our dollars are spent, and they've been allocated to the best of our abilities. And I hope and pray, and I hope that you will too, that we don't go through a situation like that where, where we feel like that's necessary again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Next item is item 2025-293, public hearing regarding text amendment 25-01. Council has requested to consider this text amendment and to amend various sections of the city of High Point's development ordinance to comply with general statutes, provide consistency, and make revisions related to special development standards. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and recognize Mr. Samuel Hennett, our interim development administrator.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to present text amendment 2501, which is the city's 12th round of general ordinance amendments since the ordinance was adopted back in 2017. This is just part of our, our ongoing regular assessment for improvement and clarification to the development ordinance. This ordinance amendment does have six specific sections, most of which are in written, you know, direct response to general statute changes. Section one updates the public notification items to simplify the notice requirement in compliance with general statute. Section two removes the term standards and allows the ordinance text to mirror North Carolina general statute. Section three, which you see on your screen, removes text from the variance section, also to ensure compliance with North Carolina general statute. Section four, that amends the ordinance to add an exemption for battery-charged security fences that are located on properties that are zoned exclusively for non-residential use. Section five updates the enforcement section of the ordinance and adds the city attorney as having the ability to enforce civil penalties. And finally, section six updates the definition of built-upon area as provided in North Carolina general statutes. That was a very quick summary of the six sections, all very minor changes and clarifications, mostly due to general statute changes. Staff does recommend approval of text amendment 2501. And as always, with any adoption of a text amendment, the council must adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement. Staff has provided such a statement in the staff report that can be used if you wish to approve this request. And staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hennett. Are there any questions from council for staff at this time?
I have one.
Yes, Councilmember Harmon.
So under the public notification change?
Sure.
So, so describe the nature and scope of the proposed development or action has been deleted. So what's, can you give me an example of the difference?
Sure.
Notice is gonna be put out under the new ordinance versus the old one?
Sure. Because the original ordinance text was gray to describe the nature and scope of the proposed development, we were basically placing signage with the full amendment on it, on the property for the posted notice. And this way, it's a little bit more clear that we're removing that posted notice there. And so it's only the reason for the public hearing. So we're just trying to make it more consistent and consolidated and, and clear.
But doesn't that inform the public less about what is being proposed? Or they have to go through a couple of their hoops?
Sure.
To find out?
That certainly could be one way of looking at it, but really, we're just trying to mirror the North Carolina general statutes. That way, there's not a major difference between the two. So we can ensure that we're enforcing this appropriately and providing notice the same across the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from council for staff? Thank you, Mr. Hennett. We are in the midst of a public hearing, and I'm looking at our sign-in sheet. And though no one signed up to speak, I wanna check to see if there's anyone here with us in the meeting who wishes to speak for or against this item. Mr. Diggs?
Hi. My name is Larry Diggs. I live at 1127 Biltmore Avenue. Right now, I'm sorry, I'm running late because the way the bus system runs now, I was depending on the bus system. And I used to catch the earlier bus so I can get here and catch all the other things. Anyway, one thing, I'm, this is an issue that's on my heart, and I, I know y'all don't have any direct bearing on it, per se, but.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Excuse me. Are you here to speak for or against this item during the public hearing?
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've got a specific agenda item that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you said you was opening for, for people to speak, you know, publicly.
Oh, for public comment.
Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
We've had our public comment period, but I'll tell you what, Mr. Diggs, let us finish this public hearing and get to these items. I know what item you're talking about.
Yeah, I misunderstood. No, no, no. It's another item besides that. Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak directly on this item that we're hearing right now? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I, and I'll make a motion to approve this item and to include the consistency and reasonableness statement that was included in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second's been made by Councilmember Holmes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is 2025-301, consideration of an appointment to the Citizens Advisory Council. Council has requested to confirm the appointment of Courtney Mickens to the Citizens Advisory Council, term effective immediately and expiring on May 31, 2026. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Holmes. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. The next is item 2025-302, consideration of an appointment to the Theater Advisory Commission. City council has requested to confirm the appointment of Beverly Lewis to the Theater Advisory Commission, term effective immediately and expiring on June 1, 2028. I'll make a motion to approve this appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, recognized, the Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on this motion?
One minor discussion point. Is there a requirement for citizens to reside within the city of High Point to be on the Theater Advisory Council?
So that's, that's a great question. I actually brought that up during some of our discussions, and I learned that as a part of the Theater Advisory Board, they do not have to live in the city, but it is advised that they live within the greater High Point area. And it mentions what the greater High Point area is, and these folks both live in that. They were also recommended by a director there, Dr. Barnard, at the theater. This, this was, that came up in my exact question. I wanted to make sure. And so I confirmed that, that it is.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. No, thank you for the question, Councilmember Andrew. Any form of discussion on this All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Before we move on, I just wanna say thank you to Beverly Lewis and to Courtney Lowe. Wait. Sorry, let me back up. Just wanna say thank you to Courtney Mickens and to Beverly Lewis for the service on the Citizens Advisory Council and Theater Advisory Commission. The next item is item 2025-303, consideration of an appointment to the Theater Advisory Commission. Council has requested to confirm the appointment of Courtney Lowe to the commission, term effective immediately and expiring June 1, 2028. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to recognize that this is the 50th anniversary of the theater this year, and there is a very exciting new season being introduced. So please go to the theater's website to see all of the upcoming shows. There are season passes and mini-season passes and group discounts. And again, I feel like this is my night, but as the liaison to the Theater Advisory Board, I would just encourage everyone, if you have slept on the theater in the past, take a fresh, new look at what we have to offer and consider attending one of or many of the shows this season.
Yep. No, thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember Cook. Any other discussion on this item?
I will say, Melissa Lowe's a great choice. She works at the community theater and does a lot of great stuff. Of course, she works for communities and schools now, but she's a great choice.
And Beverly works at, yeah, works at the Arts Council.
Yeah, Beverly works at the Arts Council. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Now, we'll take up the added agenda item. It's in the area of economic development for the targeted incentives policy. The Councilmember Peters added. Council had the chance to hear about this in today's earlier special meeting. This time, I'll ask if there's any questions from council for staff on this item.
Yes. Section seven, the second paragraph, where it says that there is a reporting requirement performance benchmarks. Could we get a little explanation of what that looks like?
Madam manager, do you mind?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, in that section, it specifically talks about how staff will follow up with businesses that have been approved for the targeted incentive investment policy. And once they have met the performance standards that are included in those agreements, it may be the job requirements, it might be the investment numbers. The staff will review that information. And once staff has certified that those benchmarks have been met, then staff will process the payment to the entity that has been awarded. All of that is covered in an agreement that is signed by both the city and the participating business that's been selected for the award.
Will those benchmarks be available for the public to see?
Those benchmarks can be available for the public to see, just as we shared tonight. They show the investment number that was made by the city. It shows the jobs that were created, and then it also shows the investment that was made by the entity. So just as we did a summary tonight that showed the businesses that were approved with the policy from last year, that information would be available as well if requested.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Andrew. Any other questions for staff on this item? Not, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second is recognized, the Mayor Proton Moore. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Prior to taking up the last item, I'll just ask, are there any, well, let me do this first. Mr. Diggs, we had a public comment period. And I, I got your phone call, and we talked about the elevator being down at the train station. And our team responded really quickly to get us the information we need. Unfortunately, the supplier who makes elevators is at a shortage right now in terms of getting the parts in that we need, but we're working as fast as we can to get that elevator repaired. I believe our team's reached out to you, Mr. Diggs, to, to share that information.
It's fixed.
And it's since been fixed. Okay. So the elevator?
It was the next day.
The elevator was fixed the next day? Okay. Only the best for Mr. Diggs. The elevator's been fixed, Mr. Diggs. If you have any other concerns regarding that there, please let us know. We always appreciate you reaching out and letting us know what's going on. Thank you for joining us this evening, too. At this time, before we take up the last item, which is to go into closed session, are there any announcements from council from the dice? I see Councilmember Cook ready?
I have one. Elevate High Point, which is the young professionals organization through Business High Point, is doing a back-to-school hygiene kit drive to support D UP's families. And so they are collecting supplies now through August 1 at the Commons at Congdon Yards. There is a bin there. But if you're not sure, you can see the receptionist for instructions to get the items there. They're open from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. And some of the items that they're looking for are things like toothpaste, toothbrushes, deodorant, soap, laundry detergent, and feminine hygiene products. You can also donate money. If you want to know more about how to do that, you can contact me, and I'll get you in touch with Lauren. But please support D UP's families as they're heading back into a new school year. You have until August 1 to donate items.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Andrew?
Good evening. In light of Parks and Recreation Month, the High Point Heroes, which is a group that Parks and Rec puts out for veterans and their families, the next outing will be a pontoon ride on City Lake Park Marina at 5:30. So please sign up for veterans and their families. It'll be a great opportunity to see the beautiful City Lake Park and look, take advantage of the things, great things we have for our Parks and Recreation Department.
What's the date of that?
August 1. Excuse me. Yeah, August 1 at 5:30.
And to sign up where?
You can send an email to highpointheroes@highpointnc.gov.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrew, thank you for that. And to, to get clarification, this would be for veterans to sign up?
Veterans and their families. Correct.
Okay. Beautiful boat ride. Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you for that. Any other announcements from the dice? Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Harmon.
The Summer Jubilee is this Saturday. City of High Point Annual Summer Jubilee Back-to-School Celebration is this Saturday, July 26. It's from 9:00 a.m. to noon. It's gonna be at the Truist Point Stadium, 214 Lindsey Street, where we'll be giving away or giving 11, more than 1,100 backpacks filled with school supplies. There will also be face painters, fairy hair, a balloon artist. And also, if you wanna know more about the services that our city provides, staff will be out there to let you know that as well. So please spread, please spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harmon?
So Saturday's a busy day, 'cause D UP is doing their Last Mood to Music down on Washington Street from 11 to 2. So go to Truist Stadium for 9 to 10:59, and then you can go to D UP, see the kids do the things they learn in the summer, the two. So it's a busy day. Mark your calendars.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the dice?
And Mayor, may I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
And I would say, do not wait until 12 o'clock, because they do go quickly. All right? So do not wait until noon. You probably will be short. All right. Thank you.
When you say you probably will be short, what does that mean?
There's not gonna be any backpacks left.
Okay. I just.
You're gonna be short.
Make sure everyone's on the same page. Okay. All right. Don't want you to call anybody out there. This Wednesday, we'll have State of the City at the university, at High Point University's arena there. Very excited. Very exciting time in terms of what's happening in the city and it's always a great time to celebrate what's taking place amongst this organization and throughout our entire community. And so if you're set to be there, we look forward to having you and it'll be a great time to shout out and to thank all the great people who are doing great work and looking forward to that. Also want to recognize, there's a Senior Resource Day taking place at St. Mary's Episcopal Church. It starts at ten a.m. on Saturday, August second. And so if you know someone who's interested, please share that news with them. And I believe at this time, that is it. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Holmes, second by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it and that motion passes. We will go into closed session. We will meet in the third floor conference room.